Hey everybody, welcome back to another edition of the Curlin Community Connection. The month of June is all politics local. We're talking about Scottsdale city elections. Every Monday we have a mayoral candidate on and all the other times we try to fill in with exciting guests. And we just happen to have one of our nine counsel aspiring candidates for council. And her name is Betty Janik. She was born in Chicago. She earned a BS in chemistry from the University of Illinois, Chicago, actually worked in the pharmaceutical industry, had some family, then taught math and science in the Denver area for over 10 years. She was actually most recently past president of the Board of the Coalition for Greater Scottsdale and also served on the steering committee for their recent bonds that were successful. She's been married for 47 years, all to the same guy. In fact, her husband and her three grown children are all physicians. So quite a good job there. Let's all welcome Ms. Betty Janik. Hi Betty.
Hello. Thanks for having me.
Oh, my pleasure. Thanks for coming on. So just to be clear with everybody who's out there in the internets, we have a conversation. I ask you some questions. Wherever that conversation may go is where it happens. I try to ask about the same questions from each candidate, but we do this as a service. All right, Betty Janik is here. She's one of nine city council candidates. Happy to have her join us. She's a Chicago native, went to, went to the University of Illinois, Chicago. Real quickly, you've been very successful in life, actually worked in the pharmaceutical industry. You were a teacher. You've got three grown kids, all doctors. So here you are in Scottsdale. Welcome to the show Benny. I feel like I've gotten to know you already. How are you?
I'm good. I'm doing fine. Thanks.
I want to apologize to everybody for the internet issues. We'll try to get it all worked out. We have a community conversation here, asking questions. If you have any questions, put them into the feed and we'll try to get them answered on the Zoom and right back to you. So let's just start off with it right now. What makes you qualified to become a member of the city council?
Okay, probably the thing that makes me the most qualified is that I am willing to work hard. I am willing to study issues and I'm willing to speak up for the citizens of Scottsdale. I think one of the most significant things I've done since I've been in Scottsdale is I filed the paperwork to form the Protect Our Preserve Corporation back in 2016, four years ago. And through blood, sweat and tears and a ton of work, we were able to get the passage in Prop 420. And it was a very interesting journey and a great journey because so many different people worked together for a common purpose. And it was really neat to see the whole community come together to save our wonderful preserves. So that was great. It was a great movement. Yeah.
And you won with a resounding, over 70%, I think of the vote, right?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
What was interesting about that is it really brought people from the difficult, the different political persuasions together. You had far right and far left kind of coming together for different reasons. Which kind of gives us hope that there's a, there's a process where we can work on particular issues of interest and actually get together. So tell me Betty, was that, would you say that was the last push for you to get involved and run for council?
No, because I transitioned into the Coalition Greater Scottsdale after that because a lot of the real dynamic, dynamic people that were involved in Prop 420 were on the Coalition for Greater Scottsdale. So I volunteered to be on their executive board and I'll be darned if they didn't vote me president, which, yes, it was a shock. Because truthfully, I had been president of swim teams and HOAs, et cetera. But usually there's a break in period where you get to know the ropes a little bit more. But they voted me in, I accepted it. And I tell you, I learned a ton about zoning and how the inner workings of the city. So that more than anything got me thinking about running for city council. When I saw all the requests for zoning changes that came through every week in October 2019, about six or seven came through all at the same week. And I thought, this is not okay. The people don't want this, or their voices aren't being heard. And there's only way to get control of it and that's to become part of city council. So, but I also want to progress in Scottsdale, so I joined the Bon Pet Committee and that too was very interesting.
Yeah, a wide coalition there as well. And again, a resounding victory for all of us.
Yeah, let's hope that follows through with my election.
I want to kind of put this out there that even though I'm running for the House of Representatives in District 23, you're running for the council, neither of us are endorsing each other's candidacies or just kind of come together as a community service to kind of get the knowledge out there for people. So I appreciate that. We do have a question already off the bat. Wow. What is next for you to focus on bringing the citizens of Scottsdale together? Wow, somebody has already picked up on this, right?
So if we can bring the people of Scottsdale together, we can begin to answer the problems of what is the vision for Scottsdale? And one big way to do that is with thoughtful growth, all the stakeholders at the table, the citizens, the businessmen, the developers, okay? And we work for a general plan that represents all our wishes. Now, the general plan has to be passed by the city council and then it has to be ratified by the citizens. So it truly needs to be a document that the citizens believe in and I guess are willing to speak up and work towards for the fulfillment of that document.
Yeah, can I go back a little bit because you were talking, you were talking about the zoning commission that you were on and that some, some plans came in, in a bunch. I mean, this is kind of like peeling back behind the curtain of the wizard. Not many of us see this. And me, who is pretty active in, in I think, politics, I have no, what is one of, what did it look like when some of the, what were some of these changes that people were asking for?
Okay, so first of all, I need to say I was not on the planning and zoning commission. They send out emails weekly if you sign up to get them. Being on COGS, I signed up to get them because COGS evaluated every request for zoning change. So what happens is you get a list with dates of a code number. Is it a zoning change with request for 28 units at Hayden and some cross street? Is it a design review board request? Or is it simply, I want to change the color of the paint on my house? So all the different requests for changes in the city come through there. Now, obviously the zoning changes are very major because you're talking about the marquee. You're talking about South Bridge 2. You're talking about nationwide. So, and those reports that come through really detailed, couple hundred pages to read through, to figure out what's going on, what are the different things you need to be careful of to make sure that you get an optimal outcome from that particular construction project. So, yeah.
And wow, so a big issue most recently was the, the South Bridge 2 and not height, right? So height and density always seems to be an issue.
Right. And it's not just height and density. It's, whoops, it's setbacks. So you know setbacks from the street. They like to reduce them so they could get more density. And the other interesting thing that is involved is there's regulations on how many units you can have per cubic area. And they also bump that up quite a bit too. So it's going to be taller. There's going to be reduced setbacks. And then the step ups, where you go up over, up over, as you get taller, it's supposed to go in more. So it's a sleek look and it doesn't take up as much as your, of your view quarter. They get changes in all of those aspects of construction.
Yeah. So you know, you have ideas of how you think, things should go, but you're going to be representing all of Scottsdale if you get on the council. How will you go about getting the residents' point of view? How will you go about assessing where the person who doesn't come to a council meeting is or where this one is? You know, how do you get that information and make it important?
I'm glad you asked because here's what I am proposing. I think that people in Southern Scottsdale feel like they have been underrepresented for a long time. And there are a lot of changes going on in Southern Scottsdale that they aren't particularly happy with. So what I'm proposing is that we have five areas of the city. We have the southern part, we have downtown and Old Town, central, north and far north. And each one of those areas has a group of citizens that work together to evaluate all the new construction projects. And they report directly to city council with what their thoughts are on that particular project. And hopefully they can work out the differences to come up with a project like Papago Plaza where most of the people, for the most part, are satisfied with the outcome. So that's kind of what I would like to see as a way to bring the city together and to get citizen input.
Very interesting. What do you, what do you think is the number one issue right now for you with the city of Scottsdale? What do you say?
All right. To me, the number one issue is they're not listening to the citizens. Let's just look at the marquee. The marquee had hundreds and hundreds of citizens sending messages that said, this marquee building is too big for the lot that you're trying to put it on. Those messages were totally ignored and they didn't listen to anything the citizens said. And it's not just that. It was the same thing with Prop 420. They made it sound like this project, millions had been spent on it already and you have no choice but to accept it. And to which I say, I disagree. I disagree. There are ways to change it. There are initiatives, there are referendums, and then finally the vote for city council candidates and the mayor. So I'm hoping, most important to me is that everybody get out and vote. So we know what direction the city wants to go in. Do they want to see a lot of change in tall buildings? If they do, vote that way. If they don't, you now have a choice for several citizen-friendly candidates. And that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Okay, we got South Scottsdale, speaking of it, Jay. He wants, he says, hi Betty. He said during the city debate, he said you would not vote for recreational cannabis in November. Can you share your thoughts on why you feel that way?
Yeah, I can. We were in Denver for 23 years and then all of a sudden cannabis was approved for general use. And the quality of the worker went down. It would be difficult to find people who would be waiters, who would be attentive to their jobs. And I guess down deep, I feel that there are enough ways out there for people to drink and, I don't know, I would say carouse, but then people aren't going to like that term. But, and the other thing is, you know, I have three children who are doctors, okay? My son in Denver sees the results. He takes care of the emergencies from the car accidents. And there are a lot of fatalities now because we're getting a lot of combination of alcohol and cannabis. And it is not a good combination. So I think right now there are enough ways for people to go out and enjoy themselves and free their spirits. I don't think we need cannabis to do that anymore. And I'm also the older generation and I'm more conservative. So I accept that too.
Yeah, that's true. And I appreciate your honesty and willing to answer the question. Let's, let's talk, you were a teacher for 10 years.
Yes.
More than 10 years.
Yes.
Now you are a member of my, my inner circle.
Yes.
I have an affinity for teachers. The city of Scottsdale doesn't really have anything to do with the district as, in terms of governance, right? And in terms of budgeting. But there seems to me that there are lots of opportunities out there. I want to know from you, do you see an opportunity if you get on the council to work more closely with the district? Are there certain programs? How do you see that working? Because for me, a great school district is the backbone of a great city.
I agree. I agree. So I know again, they're separate entities and they don't share budgets, thank goodness. Because having a school district under the control of the city government is a huge task. But the way they can work together is in the general plan, I think we need to outline a committee or commission where we have representatives, again, from various areas of the city, representing what they'd like to see as far as schools go. Now, what can we do? We can share libraries. We can share athletic facilities. Maybe even we can share science labs. Science labs are very expensive. Maybe we can come together on that. The other thing is I think we need to enjoy and talk about how great our students are. Instead of tearing them down, I think we need to say, you guys have done an outstanding job. You ladies have done an outstanding job and celebrate the successes that we have. And if you have a super duper strong district, it will bring people in. And again, to me, the best sign of a good community is a good school district. And we were in the Denver suburbs and we were in an outstanding school, school district that never voted down a bond issue, okay? And we sent kids to the best schools all over the country. And everybody was proud of the Cherry Creek School District. So I would wish that for Scottsdale.
Yeah. Well, thank you. So right now it seems that, you know, with the COVID and everything else that's happening, that's kind of going through our little hamlet here of Scottsdale. We are going to have a budget that is really going to be hurting.
Yes.
Do you see a way for us to diversify our portfolio of revenues a little bit more? We seem to be overly reliant, not just Scottsdale, I mean, this is an Arizona thing.
Right.
On tourism, right?
Say that again. You cut out a bit. Overly reliant on...
We seem a little bit overly reliant on tourism and how that kind of feeds into our sales tax.
Right. And I, I agree with what you're saying. We are very reliant on the tourism industry. But would you ask Aspen, that is also relying on the tourist industry, to stop promoting skiing when that's what they're known for? Now, what I can say is that I think there's a lot of industries we can diversify into that would play into our tourism. I think technology is an awesome aspect that we can work into. You know, we have the Cure Quarter. I think that we could combine technology and the Cure Quarter to come up with quite a few different things that we could do to attract people. We could come up with training facilities for how you dress in a sterile environment so that you don't transmit the virus. We can sell kits of equipment that have everything you need, the gown, the mask, et cetera. I think we could do some light manufacturing of some of the things that were made in China that we now should be making in the good old US of A. And I think we're poised to do that. And I also think that Scottsdale is a good city that lends itself to remote working. I think a lot of people love to live here and they want to live out where there's maybe more space or more views. And by being able to telecommute, I think our community fits into that very well.
Yeah, I think we have a wonderful community here and, you know, I can choose to live wherever I want and this is the place I choose today. What do you think is the, the number one positive about being here in Scottsdale? What's, what is it that makes us so special in your mind?
I actually think that physical environment is one of the things that makes us special. We've got the mountains, we've got the view quarters, we've got beautiful views. We've got the preserve, which draws in thousands of tourists. When you're over there getting signatures for your petition, where the half the people are out of state and out of city. So I think that's a big draw. I think the fact that we're not, it's tightly packed as a place like New York, Chicago and even Denver now. I think that's a big draw. And the amenities that we have are phenomenal. We have wonderful restaurants, we have wonderful golf courses, we have spas, and we have them all over. And I think that adds to our environment as well.
Yeah. And if you get on the council, why don't you do one of those little residence cards for somebody like me who doesn't make a whole lot of money and I can still get on the golf course, okay?
I will. I agree.
It's funny. I, I actually went to Scottsdale 101, which is a really wonderful series. And if you're out there and you're interested at all in how city government works, I would really strongly say go sign up for that. It's a wonderful thing. I don't know when it starts, but you need to look out for that.
I did take that. I took that right after the Protect Our Preserve movement so that I would know more about the way city government works. And it was a very, very good class. Very good.
Yeah. And I have to say, we have a lot of good people who are not politicians, but just the worker bees inside of the city of Scottsdale.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations to all of you out there. You're great. Hey, we're talking with Betty Janik. She's one of the council candidates here for Scottsdale. The primary is August 4th. You can get more information from her if you look at her website. It's votjanik.com, okay? And if you have questions, kind of put that in there. We have another one from Julie C. She says, do you have any plans to include more affordable housing?
Yes, I do. Because I think that a city like Scottsdale should encourage diversity. And I know when we have the revitalization, what they're doing is tearing down affordable housing and putting in a luxury condos and apartments. Personally, I think we have enough luxury apartments and condos slated to be built. I think we need to focus on single-family residents, okay? And I think that two ideas I've had on that is that a builder dedicate a certain percent of the project they're building to lower income housing or that the builder contribute to a fund that would support construction of affordable housing. And again, I do think that that's important because when you think about, and you talked about it earlier, the teachers, the nurses, the policemen, they're not making big wages. And if you're in that $50,000 a year range, you're supposedly, you're supposed to be at about $1,000 a month for your rent. That is very hard to find. And we don't want the pollution from driving an hour. We do want to keep nurses. We do want to keep teachers. And so I think we need to be more mindful of the different needs that the city has to keep those people in the city and close to where they work and involved in their community.
So you kind of talked about, we've really covered a lot here. Thank you. What do you think is the, so, so we have two very divided camps in Scottsdale as well as the country. How do you see us healing? How do you see bringing people together?
Well, when I did Prop 420, we had hundreds of volunteers. And my hardest job was keeping people from arguing with each other, believe it or not. The call's at seven in the morning. Somebody said something. I'm like, stop. This is our goal. Focus on the goal, okay? And I think the other thing that you learn through teaching, I think we both learned it, is you listen to every person and you value what every person has to say. And you take heed in what they do and you involve them in the conversation. So I think if we can just forget our dislike for the labels of extreme right and extreme left and say, you know what, we have a lot in common. We all want a good education system. We all want a safe environment to live in. We all want our schools to be the best that they can be and to educate every student. And if you focus on those main goals, you're going to realize that the important things that we value are in the middle. And then the fringe, you can leave behind and still do a real good job of governance. Maybe that's idealistic, but that's what I'm hoping for.
Well, we've got to start living our ideals. I mean, that really is what it's all about. So you were talking, I mean, some of these things are now colliding, right?
Yes.
Things I really despise is when somebody out there says, hey, I'm this. Or I'm a fiscal conservative. And then they start, you know, spending money like a, well...
Yes.
And, and we were also talking about affordable housing. Well, these two things collided. And the people I'm running against, in 2016, they voted to take away all local control for vacation rental Airbnb oversight.
I know, I know, I know.
So that, that's a problem with me. I, I think you need to live your values and you live them all the time. And that's why I admired you on the cannabis question. You said, this is who I am. This is where I come from.
Yep.
And you and I talked about it. You and I are not going to win by a shutout.
No, no.
But I really believe in local control. And I think part of that kneecapping the city of Scottsdale has led to actually a lot of affordable housing being snatched up. A lot of problems in neighborhoods that are now becoming mini hotels.
Yes.
What do you see as one, perhaps a solution for that? And then to piggyback on that, if I'm elected, how do you need me to help you be successful in Scottsdale?
Well, I think the number, the bill number is 1487. And I believe that was the bill that said, everything that Arizona says goes for the whole state, not all state.
And I do want to say that one of the guys that I'll probably be running against, John Kavanaugh, voted no. He voted against that. So good on him.
Good. Okay, that is good. I'm glad, I'm very glad to hear that. But if Scottsdale decides they don't want plastic bags at the grocery store, that's okay. And I really question the brilliance of saying, of making it more difficult for initiatives and referendums because they don't want to listen to the citizens who make the state, who make the city.
I think you and I have a budding relationship right here, Ms. Janik.
There you go.
Is your husband around? Because I gotta tell you, I think I'm in love.
There you go. I think he's asleep. We got up early to put outdoor hangers. So yeah, but no, I believe, and I guess one other thing that is a foundation that I've always lived by, I believe in the power of one. I believe that one person can go out and touch a lot of lives and make a lot of differences. And my husband, his parents never graduated from sixth grade, okay? All right? Poor Polish. He had handouts for food. Dad was out of work. Mom supported the family with factory jobs. And he is one of the best educated, most highly regarded pediatric surgeons in the nation, in one generation, okay? So I believe in the power of one. I believe that you can make a difference. I believe I can make a difference. And I believe everybody in Scottsdale can make a difference. And I challenge them to do that, to try to make a difference in their life. And when I went into chemistry, women weren't going into science. I mean, we're talking the early 70s. And it did not dissuade me. I love chemistry. There'd be three girls and 60 guys in the class, okay? But it didn't faze me because it's what I loved, it's what I wanted and it's what I was good at. So you take that and you make a difference and you show that, yes, I'm a female, but I'm also a good chemist. So that's kind of one of the things I've always lived by. So there you have it.
Funny, I am part Polish as well. Where do you go for the, and you're from Chicago. So let's talk food. Where do you, where do you go to get the best Polish here in Scottsdale?
We don't. There's not a lot of good Polish in Chicago, in, in Scottsdale.
Polish dog? How about a Polish dog?
I'd probably buy it and cook it at home. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's hard, it's hard to find it. No offense. It's not my favorite cuisine. It's kind of heavy for me.
Yeah. No, when I was saying Polish, I was talking about a Polish dog. And I was thinking about that Chicago place that's over by Fry's on, on Shek.
I am too. And I can't think of the name right now and I should, but yeah, that is a good place to go for Polish and hot dogs. Yeah.
Yeah, they, they get a gut, nice crisp on it, like a char. And they put Portillo's. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Cause they're from Chicago and we used to go there in Chicago.
Yeah, I don't, you know, and I might lose this, I might lose the, the beef vote, but I don't get the, the whole beef sandwich that you got going there. I, I don't get it. Cooked too much. Anyway, go for the Polish over Portillo's.
Okay, we'll do it.
What do you say we play a little game?
Okay, we'll try.
All right. Because we like to have fun on this show.
Okay.
I tried to come up with a, with a little funny little name for our game and I, I don't think it really works, but I'm going to go with it anyway. It's Chicag- Let's Go.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you some questions about Chicago. We'll see how well you do.
All right.
Okay, so one of the nicknames for Chicago is the second city. Is it really the second largest city, the third largest city, or the first largest city?
I think it's the third largest. New York, Chicago.
You are correct, madam.
Okay, good. Yay.
Very good. Okay, sticking with the nicknames. The second city is one of the nicknames for Chicago. Can you name one of the other nicknames?
Yes, the windy city.
Very nice. Have you been to Wrigley?
No, I'm from the south side. So we are White Sox fans.
All right. Sorry to bring that up.
Okay.
I am going to read a statement. I'm going to leave something blank. I want you to fill in the blank, okay? Chicago's downtown area is known as?
The magnificent mile.
That's true, but I was looking for the loop. We're going to have to strike that answer from the board. The magnificent mile by the, the lake is very...
A little bit north. Yes, yeah.
Okay. Here, here's one up your alley. In 1907, University of Chicago physicist Albert Mickelson became the first Americans to receive this in the sciences.
Nobel Prize.
You are correct, ma'am. That was right up the science alley.
You know, do you know what it was for?
No, drop a little knowledge on me.
Yeah, nuclear fission, breaking the atom to release energy. That was the start of the atomic bomb. And there's a beautiful plaque at the University of Chicago commemorating that event, which led to the Manhattan Project, project.
Wow, the Manhattan, very good.
Yep.
The things you learn on this show.
There you go.
In 1914, the Chicago Tribune hired Jack Lawson as the full-paid, first-time full-paid writer of this type in the US. What kind of newspaper writer was he? First of his kind.
I don't know, comics? I don't know.
Excellent guess. Film critic.
Oh, that's not bad. That was kind of close.
Yeah, oh, very close. Cause I love those animated films. Okay. Okay, this guy... Okay, uh, this guy at the Chicago Sun-Times became the first person to win a Pulitzer Prize for film criticism in 1975.
Oh.
Actually had a show.
I want to say Siskel and Ebert, and I don't know if it was Siskel or Ebert.
I'll take your last answer. Ebert.
Ebert, okay.
Roger Ebert, excellent. Okay, now we're going to get into my, my favorite subject food. In 1943, Ike Sewell invented deep-dish pizza at this restaurant.
Uh, I want to say, it could be Uno's, it could be Gino's.
I want you to think back to World War II era. I know you weren't around there, but what really had the longevity?
Hmm, I think you got me there.
I want you to take one. Come on, Betty.
Uno's, Uno's.
You are correct. Let's give her the grand prize, everybody.
I got to tell you something. The first date with my husband was at Uno's in Chicago.
Nice. Hey, you want to go a little bit off the clock here and tell me how you met your husband? Forty-seven years.
All right, you're going to laugh at this. Um, we met in a calculus class my freshman year of college.
There you go.
And I was a goody, I was a goody-two-shoes that answered all the questions.
Was he one of sixty, and you were one of three?
He was a single, and I was one of three, yes.
Well, as long as you didn't ask, and we're talking about it, you want to know how I met my wife?
How did you meet your wife?
Well, I was a first-year teacher at Pima Elementary School in 1996, teaching fifth grade. And this vision of loveliness was subbing for Mrs. Arnold.
Oh.
And at this time, I was just smitten. So I sent a kid over to challenge her class to kickball, trying to get some alone time. It turned out that she let a couple of girls play on the monkey bar, so it was just me and sixty boys, and it had to, it took a little bit more work than that. But I got her, like a, like a wounded gazelle.
That's a good story. It's a very good story.
Hey, everybody, check, check out Betty Janik at votjanik.com. Make sure you get all the information. Do, do get out there and vote August 4th.
Please vote, yes.
Vote choice. Thank you so much.
Okay, very nice chatting with you. Good luck.
I'll see you around, okay?
Will do.
Good night, everybody. Hey, tomorrow's guest, let me just, before we sign off, tomorrow's guest is Tom Durham.
Yes.
He'll be on at five o'clock. And then Thursday, we have ER Dr. Cave Najafi, who's going to talk to us about the real COVID action in here and what's going on.
Good, good. And Tom Durham, Tom Durham is a really neat guy.
Yeah, and then we also have John Little on on Friday. So people can get two more candidates. Come see us at five o'clock. Have a great Tuesday. Enjoy the wonderful weather, Betty.
Will do. More door hangers.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Betty. Bye.
Bye.